Welcome, everybody, to the October meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I'd like to thank everybody for attending today. I'm Vinita Croft, Commission Chair. I will be chairing the meeting and walking everybody through what is yet another Zoom meeting for the Commission. I will once again start by asking everyone to please mute your line when you aren't speaking. First, I would like to acknowledge that this call is taking place on the traditional territory of the Mississippa. Made up of the Sixika, Begoni, and Kainai First Nations, the ERA Makota First Nations, comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Wesley First Nations, and the Sutena First Nation. These are the people who made treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. I know that I speak for all of us on the Calgary Police Commission when I say that we condemn anti-black racism and racism and prejudice in all forms. We stand in solidarity with our Black, Indigenous, and people of color colleagues, families, and citizens. Once again, I will give a brief overview of the format for this virtual meeting. As with our previous Zoom meetings, the public session of the meeting is being recorded, so we can make it available to those who aren't able to attend. Among the panelists in this webinar, we have Commission members, staff of the Commission, and executives from the CPS and others at the CPS headquarters. Joining us as attendees in viewing mode, we also have citizen guests and media. We'll hear some presentations from CPS on the topics that are listed on the agenda, which you can find on the website of the Commission. Commission members will then be invited to ask questions. Commission members, please use the raise hand feature for that. As always, citizens who wish to speak to the Commission have an opportunity and will have registered in advance to make comments at the end of our agenda when we have our public participation portion. At that time, those who have registered will be invited to unmute your line and comment. As a reminder to those who do wish to speak during the public participation portion, because our agenda is quite full, we are only able to provide a limited amount of time for this portion of our agenda. Before the media Q and A, we will then end the public portion of the meeting, and the public participants, commissioners, and CPS will be asked to sign off. The Chief and I will remain behind to answer immediate questions, and that will give commissioners and CPS a short break before signing back on for the in-camera portion of the meeting. I will now call for declarations of the junior interest or conflict of interest. Hearing no such declarations, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. Hearing no objections to the consent agenda, I declare the consent agenda approved as presented. The next agenda item is the Chair's Report. I have a few things of note before we begin this session for my own report. First, on behalf of the Commission, I extend our congratulations to Mayor Gondak, whom, of course, we know well from her years of excellent service here on the Commission. We look forward to working with Mayor Gondak and with all of our new council. On a related note, with the election being so recent, we are still absent our usual two council representatives, of course. The newly-elected council will be making fresh appointments for these positions in the coming weeks, so our new council representatives will be joining at the November meeting. November is also the time when council makes new appointments for any open commissioner positions from the public or the police commission. And with that in mind, I would like to take a few minutes to address the Commission and everyone here today on my own behalf. After much reflection over the last few months, I've made the difficult decision to step down as Chair and as a Commission member. I made this decision several weeks ago and informed my fellow commissioners and then Mayor Nenshi. After the election last week, I then informed Mayor Gondak of this decision. As many of you know, in addition to this volunteer role with the Commission, I hold a senior leadership position with a large corporation here in the city. And in fact, I took on a more senior position two years ago, shortly after accepting the nomination to be Commission Chair. Serving on Commission and particularly as Chair has been a challenge that I've fully enjoyed and embraced, but it's also one that has greatly expanded over the past two years. And at this point, given my other commitments, I'm no longer able to dedicate the time that this pivotal role truly needs and deserves at this time. This was a very difficult decision, but I know that I'm leaving at a time that's best for transition for the Commission. It's the right time for a new Commissioner to be appointed in my stead, given that that is the usual time for council to make its selections for any new positions. And it's also the time for Commission to select a new Chair, starting in November, and to start the next year off fresh. When I look back over the last two or three years, I am incredibly proud of the work that we've done during my service on Commission and during my time as Chair. Two years ago, when I took the Chair, Chief Newfeld was just settling into his role, building an entirely new executive team. And as a Commission, we had ambitious plans of change and modernization for CPS, particularly in such critical areas as equity, diversity, and inclusion, employee engagement, accountability and transparency, as well as financial accountability processes and controls. We have made great strides in all of those areas since then, and we've made those strides over the past nineteen months while weathering unprecedented conditions and tensions, not the least of which was a pandemic, as well as issues of police accountability that have shaken public trust in police here and abroad. The Commission has done really incredible work to navigate these challenges and to lead the change that's required while balancing the need to continue to provide excellent service to the community while those changes are underway. There is much more still to be done, but I'm confident that we've made great strides and laid the foundations for transformational change. And I know that this Commission will continue to build on that. In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank a few people. First of all, Calgary Police Service Chief Mark Newfeld, his deputies and staff. Chief, working with you has been an honor, and I hope that your tenure continues to be successful. I'd also like to thank Heather Spicer, Executive Director of the Commission, and all the staff, including Legal Counsel and Public Complaints Director Deborah Patrick, and also the former Communications and Policy Director Lori DeLuca, all of whom have guided me through these years on the Commission and were invaluable during my tenure as Chair. Lastly, I want to thank my fellow commissioners. It's been an honor to work with all of you, and I wish you all the best in the future. This Commission is an outstanding group of citizen volunteers. It has great diversity of backgrounds, skills, and diversity of thought. And these diverse voices are strong and are highly skilled and dedicated. Everyone on this Commission is completely committed to making sure that all Calgaryans are able to enjoy a safe community, to live, work, and raise their families. I know I leave the Commission in good hands. So with that, we can now move on to item five on the agenda, which is the Chief's Report. Chief, I will turn it over to you in a moment. I understand that there are on the agenda several presentations. The first one is on equity, inclusion, and diversity at CPS. Chief, I understand that you have guests in the room there to assist with this presentation. So we will, after that presentation, leave a few minutes for Commissioner questions so that your guests are able to finish up. And after that, we will move on to the three remaining reports. An update on pandemic matters, recent progress on the CPS Anti-Racism Action Plan, and an update on recent crime trends. And then, time permitting, we will have time for Commissioner questions on all three of these reports. So now, Chief, I will turn it over to you to introduce the presenters.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just by way of introduction quickly, I would just like, from everybody here in the room and at the service, to join the Commission in congratulating Mayor Gondak and the new council. That's exciting, but also to thank you for your service to CPC and our city. We've definitely benefited from your very common sense and practical leadership, and sometimes, over the last little while, I've wondered how you balanced it all. So I guess I wasn't surprised to hear what I consider to be very unfortunate news, but I have really, really enjoyed working with you, and I just want to say thank you. I will move on to do the introduction that we were talking about for 5.1, and you're quite right, it's a report on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion update, and I will hand it off to Deputy Chief Gill. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair. Commission members, you'll know that from early, or December of 2020 and early of this year, we made a commitment to the Calgary Police Commission in regards to our work around equity, diversity, and inclusion, and the efforts that the Calgary Police Service would make in terms of enhancing the work that we have historically done, but really, really going down the road of equity, diversity, and inclusion. So with that, I'm proud to turn it over to our manager, Kim Masali, from our Human Resources area. And Kim has been leading the work around equity, diversity, and inclusion and in terms of the three pillars that we have going. And without further ado, I'll pass it over to Kim to lead that conversation.
So thanks for having me today to provide a brief overview of our equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts that the service has recently undertaken. We have been discussing these commitments with the Police Commission throughout this year, but this really, this report really serves as an opportunity to bring a more detailed progress update and bring together the three streams of work that we've been advancing and contributing to the service's goals around EDI. I have examples of learnings, concrete areas of action, as well as challenges that still have to be worked through as we move the needle on this important issue. We knew that we needed to take action as we continue to hear from members of the community, as well as internally about their experiences. What we didn't want to do is spend a year doing a review or a study that although valuable in some instances, we felt would delay action on our commitments to anti-racism and EDI. With that in mind, as we approached our EDI commitments this year, we had several key principles at the forefront. The first is around the importance of leveraging external expertise to assist us with models and tools to test out how to effectively advance these issues within a workplace. We also learned from other agencies and organizations on how to go beyond box checking into meaningful dialogue with our membership on topics that can be uncomfortable and challenging. We also tried to go beyond policy review. We've learned from previous efforts around gender that the service has undertaken that policy, although again important, but it can only tell us so much about where we need to improve. So we instead work through practices and processes with the starting point of an acknowledgement and reflection that our services can be experienced differently based upon identity factors such as race, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. We also wanted to contribute to the buy-in and understanding amongst our members of this work and the related concepts. Lastly, but not least, we also saw this as an opportunity to engage the service's internal and external anti-racism committees as part of this work, where we were able to take our learnings and also hear additional thoughts that we had not thought of. I will provide a high-level overview, as Deputy Gill mentioned, of the three streams of work for you this afternoon. I'm going to keep it fairly short, so if there are questions on the details, I'm happy to answer. So the first stream of work is around the EDI tool pilots. So for those who are less familiar with these tools, they're essentially a formalized approach to improve organizational decision-making and consultation that fosters meaningful engagement. So ultimately, it is a set of questions that just formalizes ensuring that we engage on key decisions, the development of policies, and services. So ultimately, the CPS did want to leverage the external expertise of a consulting group, which we ended up utilizing Canadian Equality Consulting to guide these discussions within the service and then also bring with them a tool that we could test out. Based upon research and benchmarking, the service also wanted to start small and then build out, which is why we chose to pilot the tool and do facilitated sessions with four work areas, which were the Skills and Procedures Training Area, the Intelligence Evaluation Unit, the Professional Standards Section, and the Tactical and K-9 Units. So we chose these areas because we felt like it was a fairly decent cross-section of the service, representing kind of internal and external focused services. This work did involve the delivery of a training to start it off. This was delivered to the executive and senior leadership teams, the pilot areas, our audit, policy, as well as strategic communications sections. We included these additional groups outside of the pilots to ensure that our leadership and communications would be provided with additional support to enable them to advocate for this work. The training was followed up with several workshop sessions with each of the pilots, where they sought to understand how their work impacts different groups, and they got concrete recommendations on how to have more engagement to ensure inclusive practices, and that came directly from our consultants. The workshops were really an opportunity for dialogue, reflection, some interrogation of one's personal experiences, privilege, and long-held beliefs. We really benefited from the small group discussion rather than a training that was delivered to a room of a hundred people. We found it quite valuable to work through those concepts specific to the work area involved. Like many other initiatives this year and last year, we did struggle a bit with the online format. I think, obviously, because of the public health restrictions, when having conversations that require vulnerability and reflection, as we all know, that can be a little bit challenging to do over Zoom or Teams. However, out of these sessions, we did have several valuable learnings. One of the first ones was just around the need to explore further the awareness and how we communicate about CPS processes within the community. An example of that could be how to submit public complaints and compliments. There was an identification that more engagement and communication was required to ensure that our process were accessible to all members of our community. There's also some opportunities to improve the way desegregated race-based data is collected and reported on by the service. The CPS is actively working with our provincial and federal partners around this as they establish guidelines which will then impact us. But there still needs to be continued engagement with community in Calgary around how this is done. There's also some internal misperceptions around fairness and career-related processes that came up. For example, when additional engagement or efforts are made to support increased awareness, there was some concerns discussed amongst the pilot groups about how that would impact some of our members that we were maybe targeting for recruitment in certain areas. And so I think additional engagement and work needs to be done to to address that issue, perhaps some increased understanding of the concepts of equity so that some of these efforts are not perceived as unfair. And certainly, we do not want any sort of backlash to certain groups or individuals when we reach out to increase our diversity internally. One of the last pieces that I'll touch on today is just around having the importance as we move forward with this EDI tool of having those small group sessions being the most effective to build understanding of different perspectives and experiences. The pilots also discussed that they would be interested in more support and training on how to engage appropriately on certain issues and making sure that they were having a diversity of perspectives at the table. But how they would do that, I think they're just looking for a little bit more support in terms of what that looks like and how to make sure that they're doing it appropriately, and then creating safety for people to come forward to share those experiences. We were very lucky in that we had many more areas volunteer to be pilots than we had capacity to do, and quite a bit of enthusiasm to participate and learn. Through the pilot discussions, we also discovered that many of these groups have been informally trying to work through these issues themselves, but the tool really helped formalize that and take the reflection further. This isn't to say that there weren't challenging conversations and topics as we navigated these issues, but there was a desire to learn from those participating. So the second piece of work and stream that I want to highlight is around the University of Calgary Partnership on the Art of the Nudge. And so this one really is a research partnership that we struck with the University of Calgary in 2020. It's designed to test an evidence-informed approach that goes beyond training and policy that focuses on culture and social norms. So again, this one did also go beyond policy and start to really get into the perceptions, behaviors, and barriers to an inclusive and safe workplace, which, with the goal of ultimately ensuring that all our members can fully participate in the workplace, and then that positively impacts our service delivery to the community. So specifically, within this initiative, we had a few streams of work. The first was around our executive and senior leadership team. So we took them through a nine-month process designed to increase their equity awareness, surface harmful cultural dynamics, signal safety and belonging, and strengthen their capacity as leaders. We also developed thirteen executive nudges, which are essentially small changes that as leaders they can make to support equity inclusion. The nudges included ways to check for bias in everyday interactions, promote a more inclusive decision-making by bringing more perspectives to the table, ensuring more equitable approaches to work assignments, and framing the importance of diversity and inclusion in a way that are more likely to be effective at building buy-in. And all of those items are important, but I think that last piece as a leadership team, as we navigate this time of change, is that we are supporting our members in terms of how to talk about this, how to build buy-in, and to do it in a in a way that really builds that buy-in and understanding. Another aspect to this partnership that I know we've talked about a lot with the Commission is around the work with the recruiting unit. We have been working collaboratively with members of the unit to make small changes to their processes to help them cultivate bias-checking habits and strategies. Again, this work was not a high-level review. We actually had the U of C doing job shadowing and learning sessions with members of the recruiting unit. And as a result, we have completed changes to our recruiting communications and website, as well as analyzed each part of the recruiting process to identify barriers and have started to implement mitigation strategies. This really involved questioning things that have always been done in a certain way. Having the U of C expertise to guide that assessment through a different lens was tremendously helpful. And ultimately, with the goal of ensuring that the CPS is recruiting members that represent the community we serve. The other focus of the research partnership is around preventing and better responding to sexual and gender harassment in the workplace. In July of this year, I'm quite proud to say that we finalized a joint submission to the Government of Alberta with recommendations on reforming the Police Act, as this legislation is creating barriers for organizational change on how we can deal with these issues. The service acknowledges that we continue to improve in this area, but we also know that there's impacts of the Police Act in terms of how we can do that, which we know from research that these issues disproportionately impact certain groups and individuals. So that's the U of C research. I'll quickly go through the last one and then get to some next steps. So last but not least, we did conduct some very specific EDI work with our internal psychological therapy section, which has a tremendous role within the service to play in supporting the wellness of our members. This particular work was focused on leveraging external expertise to review approaches and barriers to participating in psychological therapies to ensure that all members feel comfortable coming forward and accessing services. And one of the recommendations was a simpler one but a meaningful one around directly communicating that safety to all members that when they come forward and use those services, that they will be safe to do so and supported. We also assessed our psych therapies vendors, which we rely on quite a lot because we only have so many clinicians within the service. And so really, that assessment was to understand the clinical specialties, the cultural competencies, the languages spoken, and the office of accessibility of each of those vendors, so that when we are referring a member to a psych therapy vendor that's external to CPS, that we know that they are going to be receiving the service that they need. One of the examples given in those discussions was, I think it was, folks are two times more likely to get a greater benefit out of psychological therapies if it was conducted in their first language. And so these are the types of considerations that we want to have moving forward and ensure that our referrals are accessible and supportive to all members seeking that support. That work is going to continue. We have been lucky to engage a consultant to assist with that work as well. So in conclusion, we have had several areas of success in these streams of work and experienced significant participation from members, but there is still a lot of work to do. We are continuing our research partnership with the University of Calgary into 2022 to work further on recruiting, training, and other HR-related practices, as well as the work around addressing sexual and gender-based harassment, which involves partnering with the province on Police Act reform from a trauma-informed lens. We also are going to be leveraging the reallocation funding for anti-racism efforts to hire EDI advisors, who will continue the advancement of the EDI tool throughout the service, so it doesn't stop after our consultant leaves. We are seeking permanent funding for these positions as well, so that we can ensure sustainability of the work. We're also wanting to incorporate these EDI learnings into the anti-racism training being advanced by the service. And so with that, I conclude. I know those were a lot of words, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, thank you very much for that report, and I know that my colleagues will have questions on that. But it was a great report, and I know a lot of work has gone into that. The first hand I have seen go up is Commissioner Sidiki.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the report and all the work that's been occurring. I look forward to seeing it continue further over the next few months and years, of course. My question is something that you mentioned sort of at the beginning and at the end. One of the things that we see common when organizations start moving towards EDI work is this belief that you're going to hire unqualified people. You're looking just to fill quotas. I've heard it many, many times in my professional career. I still hear it constantly from some of my colleagues even. Oh, these people aren't qualified for the job, but you want to bring in someone with that background. So I'm curious, I have found that until you get over that barrier, you can't move this work forward properly. So what will the service be doing to sort of communicate right away internally to get buy-in before moving on with the other pieces? Because as we've seen with many organizations, if you don't have that internal buy-in, none of this EDI work is going to go forward and work well.
Chair, I can, or Commissioner, I can answer that question first. I think, I think you can make an important point for us as an organization to to be mindful of. And what I'll say is this, I think, I think what's different than our approaches that we've normally taken in the past, both in our service and other organizations, is this is not a top-down approach. We have brought in external consultants and external expertise, and we are, we are gonna, we're, this is an awareness and education campaign throughout our service that we are hitting all the levels of the service. So it won't be a top-down directive coming from senior leadership. It is something that we are getting buy-in from, and as you said, this is, this is not weeks of work. This is months and years of work, and it will take us some time to go down this journey and build the capacity, as Kim spoke about internally and embedded in everything we do. So it's not a program, it's not a something we do in 2021 and we never talk about again. And this is going to be a longstanding issue within our service, and we're going to have it at many aspects or many levels within the service and not something that is just driven top-down. So in that, and I think it's also important to note that we're not making any changes to our eligibility criteria. We're not making any changes to our competitive processes, which would, which would lead one to believe that, that if we were, that we're trying to water down the processes, which is not the case. We remain, we remain our processes, which will be highly competitive. And so there won't be any, if I could paraphrase your words in mind, there won't be any tokenism involved in any of our processes.
And if I could just add as well to the deputy's comments is that how it came up in the pilots wasn't in relation to external recruitment. It was in relation to internal processes and, and actually a concern on behalf of some of the pilot members of, you know, any sort of negative impacts to members by doing some of these targeted efforts. And so it was interesting to see the consultant lead them through the principles of equity and to start to see the learning develop as we work through the pilots. And so I think our consultants are recommending is that we continue down that path with those smaller group conversations of working through those concepts and building the awareness of what those additional engagement efforts and supports look like and how, you know, they provide essentially a more equitable access to some of our career development pathways.
Thank you both. I look forward to all levels of the service being brought along because this is important work, and you need to have buy-in from all levels and everyone to continue it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rossell.
Thank you. Um, I know that you've gotten a better understanding over the last few months of where systemic racism exists within the service. Do you, do you feel that more generally within CPS, there is a broader understanding and acknowledgement or acceptance now of where systemic racism exists? You know, or, or what is the plan to make sure that, that there is that broader acceptance and understanding?
I think there's still some challenges there, Commissioner Rossell. I think it is, uh, it is expanding within the service. I think initially we had a lot of, uh, questions from members saying, you know, show me inside the service where it is. And if you're thinking of this, you know, we, we sort of conceived of it in terms of that would be institutional racism as opposed to systemic. We're actually looking for the stuff inside our own organization, but also what's across the system. And so talking about the fact that we are, the police are actually tend to be a little later in the system. Where a lot of, you know. A lot of the inequities, I think, have already occurred, and then we're dealing with people who are, um. Suffering from, uh, challenges as a result of other aspects of the system, and then the police are there. And that's where I think we're seeing some of the inequitable criminal justice outcomes. So, but I think there are, uh, things happening in the organization. Certainly, uh, Deputy Chief McClellan and the work with the internal ARAC, I think, is having some impact. One of the conversations we're talking about now as we approach 2022 is looking at how we, um. How we, um, scaffold that out further into the organization, because I think there's a thirst for it. One of the real challenges that we've had is that we're sort of building the plane, we're flying the plane, we're servicing the plane, all at the same time. And so when you think about trying to get into a large organization and, um, and have these conversations, as Kim says. We found that these were very valuable to have those conversations and work through those issues. But, um, we have a lot of small, small work groups to get to, to do that. So there's a number of different ways, both large and small, that we're working on, but in direct answer to your question, I think things are definitely improving in that regard. But there's still definitely work to do for sure.
Thank you.
I do see other hands up, but I think I will take the chair's prerogative to follow up on that question with one. A similar question about gender. Where are you finding through this work? Some of your biggest rocks are to really, um, make change in terms of gender equity.
That would give her, we want to speak that way.
They, um, obviously we've been at some of the gender work for a few years now, but I think the, the art of the nudge work has. Sort of revealed, um, I guess initially when we used to do this, we would focus on the promotion process. Or we would focus on, uh, recruitment and which was certainly very valuable. But the approach that they are taking is by looking at the whole talent pipeline. So one of the bigger rocks that we're looking at moving this year is what does that support look like? Um, for officers as they look to apply for promotion, like all of those interactions, all those career development opportunities that contribute. To, like, it's not just about the promotion board, it's about how they get prepared for that promotion, how they're supported or not supported. What sort of access do they have to decision-making tables and experience and that type of thing? So I, I would say that that's probably one of the bigger rocks that we have to delve into a little bit more. And again, that involves more than HR, that is, um, about the service. I think one of the pieces that, you know, certainly we prioritize and I hope we continue to do is around that sexual harassment. We continue to monitor what's happening in other agencies and organizations around this issue. And I think, um, not addressing it and not being proactive about it really, um, limits the full participation in, in the workplace. After, and those types of things. So I think those are two of kind of the bigger rocks. Um, and then just some of the social norms work, I think, I can't speak for the executive. But in terms of some of the work that they were led through. I think that, um, just reflection on how, you know, again, access to decision-making. And how many perspectives that we're bringing to the table when we're making, you know, even operational decisions in the service. So that I think would be kind of the key rocks, but if you want to add anything.
No, I think that's good, Kim. I think I, I, I agree with what you said. I'm really sort of, um, focused right now on the police act submission, the joint submission that Kim had referred to, um, with the University of Calgary. Because it's timely in the sense that the police act is open for review right now, so this really is the opportunity to get that onto the table. I think we recognized in the discussions around, um, those issues inside the services. There was a tension between the Occupational Health and Safety Act, which for most workplaces is the, has primacy around, um, safety in the workplace. And this type of thing, and then, but that intersects with the police act in a police setting and the way that the police act. Connects to the collective agreement. And so what ends up happening is that a lot of issues, including, um, uh, sexual harassment, gender issues. End up in the police act, uh, pipe. And the problem is, of course, those need to be handled often differently than they should be, or differently than some of the other, um. Files that are otherwise there. The workplace issues would be able to be handled, I think, faster. I think they would be able to handle more sensitive, uh, sensitively, and I think also they would be able to be done in more of a trauma-informed sort of a way. Uh, but right now there's some issues around the police act with respect to that. So if we could get to a place as, as in terms of our police act reform, where we could move those things outside of the police act. Perhaps bringing them back in if we need to at the back end, depending on the outcome, uh, that would be a, a big, big, uh, win. Because I think right now, one of the biggest barriers to, uh, members coming forward with issues is exactly that process and exactly those tensions.
I think I would just add to something that I forgot to mention is that I think some of our gender work in the past. Um, could have been more inclusive, and I think the way that we're approaching it now with bringing in some of that UFC partnership research work. Under the EDI umbrella is to ensure that we're being more inclusive and having that intersectional approach. That I think was sometimes missing in the past, so I think that that'll be important to keep at the forefront as we move this forward.
Thanks very much, and certainly as part of the commission, I know my fellow commissioners share this view. Uh, the advocacy that you've done to increase the range of, um. Available processes to include more remedial processes when you're looking at. Issues and disputes and potential misconduct, um, is really important here, so applaud those efforts. Thank you. I will go now to Commissioner Cornet.
Thank you. I think, um, a great update and, and appreciate all of that. Um, my question, it's, um, tangential, I think, to, uh, the questions and comments that you've made so far. Um, and it's pretty tactical in nature, but, um, given that, uh, normalizing the conversations around EDI. Is part of addressing the systemic nature of it, um, and that the small group, um. Pilots that you've done so far with the training, along with the training that you did over time with the senior leadership team. Seems to have, had some good progress. Can you give us an idea of how long, um, or what your plans are to. Um, move through the rest of the organization, um, because that's, that's truly what, uh, uh, and I appreciate that it's, you know, it's not just about the training. And it's a never-ending journey, uh, but this is certainly a huge first step to have things, um. Uh, like, uh, understanding bias and all those sort of things, at least appreciated by all the members of the organization. So can you give us just a, a bit of an update of, of what your plans are and how long you anticipate at least the first go-around to take? Thanks.
That's a really good question. I think right now we're focusing on priority areas, and so what we're doing currently is, uh, some work in our PTO program. So those are our police training officers. So it's the next phase, uh, as Kim pointed out, one of the places that we had done work on with the lens was in our. Chief Crowfoot Learning Center, so, um, which has a lot to do with recruit training when they come in. So we're talking recruiting, training, and the next phase was with PTOs. So they will take recruits out on the, on the, uh. The develop, next developmental phase, uh, into the street. And so that's an important place, uh, to be able to get, uh, um, discussions going around these issues. And I think then there's been discussions around frontline supervisors, making sure they understand the issues, but also understand their responsibilities. Uh, under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, which tend to fall there. But even, you know, your reference to the broader, um, issue of, um, making sure that people understand the processes. And the range of sort of safe doors to go in and not, I think what's happened in the past is when people have had concerns. There's been a feeling that the issue would be taken out of their hands, and it would become a formal investigation under the police act, whether they wanted that or not. I think helping people to understand the, the various different routes and also being able to have a conversation before there's decisions made. And making sure that the individual involved is involved in the decision-making is a big and important piece of that. There's a number of things, uh, in terms of the next steps. I was talking about frontline sergeants that are on the table right now for, um. Training priorities looking into 2022, but it's one of numerous, and I think that we're just at that place right now because of where we are in the business cycle. Where decisions will be made around what capacity we have to deliver, um, which, uh, training and to whom. And those will be decisions will be made between now and the year.
Thank you. If I can just add just a, a thought that comes to mind as you say that, to truly understand the PTO being the next step, and that's great. But when that, um, new officer runs into the frontline supervisor, that's probably where it's going to hit hardest. And so just a question of whether those can be done at the same time, or the frontline supervisors. So that they are ready for the new officers when they join. Um, but I'll just leave that as just a thought that came to mind as you were talking about. I think it's always a long and a lot of work and appreciate all of that. So I appreciate your, your explanation. It is certainly a multifaceted approach that has to be done, so thank you very much.
Thank you both for that. Commissioner North, pick one.
Uh, yeah, thank you for the report. Um, I, I just want to focus back to an HR issue that we, that you brought up earlier. And that was the recruiting more diversity. Now, one of the topics that I actually caution all the time and that has been identified that actually falls through the system. When we talk about systemic in nature, I'm going to use this as an example, indigenization of systems. That's where you stick an indigenous person into a system that's not meant for them and not prepared for them. So I'm glad there's this piece happening with the, uh, the supervisors in place to actually see. That this is going to accommodate the recruiting process in the long term. Now, with that being said, um, I, I'm really, you know, supportive of best, uh, practices in the long term when it comes to recruiting. Because we've been dealing with this with CPS for a long time, since 2017, since I've been sitting here. And this recruiting process of how are we going to get diversity into the, you know, in, in, into the Calgary Police Service, I see an opportunity here. I see that opportunity with this UFC partnership study that you actually mentioned. And, uh, what, what I heard, um, what I'd like to see out of this is a little bit more emphasis on that research. In order to develop this best practice, because it's not just the Calgary Police Service that are suffering from this. It's every other system out there that's trying to identify how to actually incorporate these, these best practices in their recruiting processes. So I think we need to actually have a focus. Um, I want to know, you know, how long is this partnership with the, with the university going? And what's the long-term, you know, what are the long-term goals? Because this is an opportunity to identify something that everybody else is having issues with.
So the partnership was established in 2020, and we have funding and confirmation to go to the end of 2022. So we are hoping that we can continue. Thankfully, we've also benefited from, uh, funding and support from the provincial government for this work as well. And so we are hope, we are seeing it in a long-term nature and hoping that we can continue beyond 2022. And we know that the work with recruiting is not done as well. We want to start to expand that out, but we know that there's opportunities to improve. I also appreciate your point around, you know, we can recruit, um, increase our diversity recruiting. But we also need to make sure that our environment is safe and inclusive when people start with us. And so I think their work is trying to tackle all of those pieces rather than just focusing on one. But Chief, if you or Deputy Gil, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, no, thanks, Kim. And, uh, Commissioner, what I was going to add, um, is, uh. Sometimes organizations look for in-house solutions and seek in-house, uh, uh, innovation to problems. Uh, we've actually partnered, as you've noticed, with the University of Calgary and other stakeholders. Who are providing us guidance and advice in doing this from a research perspective, from an educational, uh, perspective. So, uh, we are, we are doing our best to, uh, seek the expertise that's out there to help us build our systems better.
Thanks very much for that. I believe, uh, Commissioner Campbell is next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so a comment first and then a question. Um, the processes and integration of the work on collection of race-based data across the board. Um, while I hear you and I understand that the active work in this area, there must be a much more sense of urgency on this issue. And I encourage CPS to take leadership with their provincial and federal partners. Um, because those provincial and federal partners may not necessarily see the need for urgency. Or have a commissioner like me, who is going to have their finger pressing on this issue daily. The response and changes in sexual violence investigations, um, to incorporate, uh, a trauma-informed response. Um, are excellent, um, because a CPS has stated. The language and approach demonstrates victim care and respect. So considering the application of an anti-racism lens. How could a trauma-informed response and approach be used in investigations? Where systemic racism and intersectionality are the prevailing issue, such as in hate crimes?
Thank you, Commissioner. A lot to, lot to take on there. Just in response to your comment there about the importance of the race-based data, thank you. We see that as well. Um, I think anytime that you're trying to align the practices nationally, which is important, and I know you understand this as well. Uh, because once we implement these practices, um, we want to be able to actually compare between cities and, and entities and that sort of thing. So that the data is useful in that regard, so that's important. But I also, I share your frustration in the fact that anytime you're trying to coordinate something on a national level, it tends to be. Um, uh, well, I'll just say painful, but locally, uh, we're definitely wanting to work with communities, starting obviously. And where I think we have taken a leadership approach around professional standards, complaints and that sort of thing. So we're going, we are going it alone on a number of these files and recognizing that we're going to have to change probably. And, and, uh, align later on, but, uh, but anyway, your point is well taken on that one, so certainly keep pushing. I know you're passionate about that, and I know you will. Um, just to your question there, I like. I, I think the issues, obviously, we sort of look at what we're doing internally around the response to, you know, gender and sexual harassment. And typically what we're talking about here and what we're working on with the folks from the University of Calgary is everything that falls below the level. Of, uh, something criminal, because what happens is, of course, as you know, the current, uh, process would be. If we had something that looked like it might be more criminal, it's more likely to be the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team that would take that investigation. So in this environment, we don't keep most of those. Um, so where we're focused is on the ones that actually are at a lower level. And so I think there's issues with under-reporting of some of those, like when you, when you refer to the ones that, uh, you know, would include features. Like systemic racism and perhaps, uh, intersectionality. We have to be mindful of, you know, the intersectional identities of, of our employees, but I just don't know if the, um. If the number of those, like, like right now, our, our sample size of these number of complaints isn't as high as it could be. And on the one hand, you'd say that's good, because maybe there isn't that much. On the other hand, I suspect that there's, there's some under-reporting here. And this is, the first focus has got to be to make sure the, the environment is safe enough and the processes are understood well enough. That folks will come forward. I think after that, we know what to do, because if we talk about our, our, um. Our investigators in Deputy Cook's area, uh, you know, we have actually taken a really good, um. Uh, look and improved our services around trauma-informed and around victim-centered, and now we need to translate that into professional standards as well. Uh, and there are many issues, I think, with the police act and the way that is currently, you know, very formalized. And it's like a court martial and these type of things, that makes it very difficult to look at issues like, uh, a victim-centered approach and trauma-informed. But I think we continue to advocate down that road, recognizing those issues that you flagged are very important, not only outside the organization. Where I think we are, uh, in a better place, but inside the organization too. And that's why I'm saying we've prioritized that to say, this is something that now that the act is open, we've got to get ourselves to a better place for the sake of our, sake of our folks.
Thanks very much for that, and, um, uh, on the, uh, on the approach around the, uh, collection of race-based data. And perhaps having to go it alone, um, it's a situation, uh, chief, where I think, uh, some. It's a situation, Chief, where I think some, you know how it works when you're trying to rally those provincial and federal partners, you might have to, you might have to come with the answer on your spreadsheet in your pocket and, and bring those folks on board. And you have a sense of urgency, and I will continue to impress upon you the sense of urgency around that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I am not seeing any other hands up, but I think it's time now to move on to the next report. So thank you once again for those reports and for all of the questions and responses to it. And Chief, I will turn it back to you to introduce the presenters for the remaining three presentations.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kim, and your team there for the work. I'm going to hand this over the pandemic update to Deputy Gil for the internal lens, and then he'll hand it over to Deputy Toffick, who will speak to the external side.
Thanks, Chief. Chair, a good update since the last update we provided, which was on the November 28 Commission meeting. Since that time, we've released a mandatory COVID vaccination policy that aligns with the City of Calgary's policy, which was also released at the same time on October 6th of 2021. As of yesterday, we have almost 85% of our employees have have provided their proof of vaccination or provided their vaccination status within our PeopleSoft system. We're continuing to work with the City of Calgary on the, on an education process that we're going to commence on November 1st, which will talk about vaccinations and some education around the, how the vaccinations were developed and the importance of vaccinations for our employees. And we're also on track for developing a rapid testing system after November 1st for those employees who have not provided their proof of vaccination results. And in conjunction with the City of Calgary, and we will start providing some policy and some, or some updated communication to our membership on how that's going to flow as of this week. All of our members have until November 1st to provide their vaccination status to, to the PeopleSoft system. So we have an idea of who is vaccinated, who is not vaccinated, and who will be complying with the rapid test option.
Thank you, Deputy Gil, and thank you, Chair. With respect to the external perspective, since our last meeting, we've continued to work in establishing the COVID Public Health Compliance Team for CPS and drafting the new standard operating procedures to assist our frontline officers and external partners such as Alberta Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Commission, City Licensing Bylaw, CFD and AHS. They work with our partners in responding to calls for, at higher risk or higher conflict establishments, upholding the bylaws and public health orders and trying to divert COVID-related calls away from the frontline ideally. And they also follow up on the HST line, so we get tips in from AHS to support them around site inspections and such. Additionally, since the last meeting, given the technology implementation by the province, the Alberta COVID Records App has been pushed to all CPS mobile phones. So members are able to confirm vaccination status in support of some of those investigations and potential breaches of the provincial restrictions exemption program. As well, we meet weekly with the Alberta Enforcement Framework for Repeat Offenders Operational and Task Groups. So that's two meetings every week where we look at prioritizing, I guess, more challenging case files in the regions across Alberta. And that's including our partners in Alberta Health Services, Alberta Labor, Alberta Prosecution Services, AGLC, and other law enforcement agencies as required. With that, we've been continuing to communicate with the public, our frontline officers, around complaints involving fraudulent vaccine passports and any of those complaints that we receive through our tip line. And also on an ongoing basis, on a weekly basis, we're dealing with any demonstrations, protest activity that has been occurring. Typically, we're seeing them on weekends with a range of activities from events to demonstrations, all inclusive. So we're monitoring, monitoring those and reporting up through the provincial framework to ensure our consistency with our partners across the province. So I'll leave it there, and I guess we'll continue.
I think I heard you say you were going to save questions till the end. So if that's the case, quickly move to 5.3, which is the Anti-Racism Action sorry, Anti-Racism Action Plan Update, and that will be Deputy McCullough.
Thanks, Chief. Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update. I just thought we'd start with adding some details to Commissioner Rizell's question that the chief answered with respect to where we are internally. And so a year end, we recognize and realize that we do need to do a bit of a pivot. We're working with our City Calgary Partners and some researchers from the UFC. And we're actually going to be conducting a baseline survey. So although we've got great engagement, we have listened and learned, especially with Inspector Martin and Katie Dusette, who's the manager in ARAC, as you know, who have heard anecdotally that there's lots of questions and there's lots of engagement, but there's still needed a lot more awareness and a lot more of information. So we are pivoting a bit with our strategy internally, just recognizing that we do need to do more internally. Having said that, we continue to meet regularly with our boards. We've had many meetings this past month. All of the boards are just fantastic, incredible engagement. They ask lots of really great questions. They've all got action items. And in particular, and I think you mentioned the last time, the youth advisory boards, I got the privilege of spending a couple of hours with them last week and just an amazing group of people from the ages of 12 to 18 who have gone to school all day, and then they spend the two to three hours with the Calgary Police Service. And they, again, ask great questions. They come with optimism. They come with hope. They come with challenges in their family, challenges with their friends, challenges what's going on, going on in school. So just a great engagement and great consultation with our boards. Having said that as well, on December 6th, we're actually going to be bringing together all of our advisory boards for a planning session that will include all of our chairs and co-chairs and one or two members from all of our boards, so all 10 boards, including the youth advisory boards and our ARAC committee. And we'll just look back, we did this last November, December, and talked about their action items and just an opportunity to see what has transpired over this past year and what is the plan for the next year. Also, on November 18th, we're going to be holding a Diversity Unit Information Summit that will be virtual for many of the advisory boards, as well as their contacts in the communities. And we're going to be doing a presentation on redirect extremism, hate hurts presentation, and what it is, a hate crime is, and how to report it. We'll also have some follow-up presentations by our folks in our major event and emergency management team and talk about operational plans, protests, and trends. And we will also talk about bullying ends here, a presentation by Constable Todd Millmine and an online exploitation and current event trends to risk children from members of the ICE unit. So a couple of really key pieces that we've got planned for November, December. But I'll just add a couple of key highlights as to what's transpired over the past one. Many of you have heard me talk about us hiring the ARAC Change Management Specialist. I think many months ago, I had shared that we weren't moving forward with that. Again, being flexible and realizing the need to do that, we in fact have been working through that and the job descriptions. And I'm happy to report that it is in the final stages and should be posted here very shortly with the assistance of the Human Resources Shop. We've done a lot of work this past month with respect to our indigenous roadmap. And I can also tell you that we've done a bit of a pivot here as well with the addition of a couple of members that we've been able to second into the area. We've got some fresh eyes on this. And although we know that many of those action items came from our community, we are continuing to work with them. And again, an opportunity to reflect and look back. What is it that we have moved forward? What is still outstanding? There have been many other fatality inquiries over the past year that have many recommendations that we want to ensure that we have on our horizon and that we are moving forward with that. I know the question will come up about indigenous liaison officers. We continue to have lots of conversation about those with the many great partners and lots of input, lots of feedback. I think it's time for us, I think we're at a point where it, you know, I think we've reached a fork in the road, and we need to decide which path we're going to go down. So next week, I'm bringing together a group of people internally first to talk about that. And then a couple of weeks after that, we've got a meeting set up with our external partners to talk about what does this look like for the new year? As I said, I think it's time to go one direction or the other and, and plan that out for the next year. Just give a couple of other highlights. On October 4th, the chief and members of our Diversity Resource Team participated in the Sister, in the Sisters in Spurt vigil, supported by the Awatan Healing Lodge in memory of missing and murdered indigenous women and girls. Three members of our Diversity Resource Team walked from Pecani to Calgary. Two CPS members received Blackfoot names. And one of our female Diversity Resource Team members received a ribbon skirt. I can also tell you that we have recently joined the Alberta Association of Police policing within Indigenous People Subcommittee, often referred to as PWP. We are also represented at a National CACP Chiefs Association PWP Committee as well. And we're confident that our contributions at both the provincial and national level will influence reconciliation in a very real way. Chief Crawford Learning Center and a huge thanks and shout out to my colleague Deputy Gil and many of his team members. As many of you know, we have, our training center has been called the Chief Crawford Learning Center for a lot of years. And recently, it was identified that in fact, we had appropriated this name without following the appropriate Blackfoot customs and traditions. And so just last week, we had the honor of meeting with many members from the Sissika Nation Council and Elders to exchange gifts and properly honor Chief Crawford's legacy as an everlasting influence for all CPS members. Elder Clearance Wall Flag from Sissika was present to offer an opening blessing and to share the history and story of Chief Crawford. We will continue to work with the chief and council, elders, and traditional knowledge keepers to follow protocols and have a proper name transfer ceremony in the very near future. You've heard me talk about the sacred space update. I'm also happy to tell you that that is on schedule to be completed. It, we're working on the artwork installation, and we continue to work with the Urban Society of Aboriginal Youth. And when COVID is all over and we get an opportunity to invite people into our headquarters, this will be an amazing mural for many to come and see. They just have done an incredible work. And it's a project that we're excited to share and, and work with our partners in. You've also heard me talk about the West Winds Flagpole reconfiguration. I'm happy to report, although it's taking quite some time, I think a couple of years. We have started the construction out front of headquarters. And that, by the end of the year, I don't have an exact date, but I have been told by the end of the year, they, once the construction is complete, the flags will proudly display Flags of Treaty VII, the Matee Nation, and the flags of our equity-seeking groups to celebrate our relationship with community on special occasions. The flags of Treaty VII at the Matee Nation are important for the nation-to-nation relationship we currently have with indigenous communities. Having these flags flown at CPS headquarters, shows that the CPS respect the treaties, understands nation-to-nation partnerships, show that this is a safe and welcoming space for community members and honors the stewards of the, of the land that have been here since time immemorial. It's important for us to know and understand the stories that we have regarding our partnership with the indigenous community, as well as the indigenous gifts we have entrusted to carry. CPS is a story surrounding our Blackfoot teepee, our ceremonial pipe, as well as our Blackfoot honor song. We also continue to work with many people internal and external regarding our training and education through the CCLC. You would have heard the manager, Kim Masili, talk about that earlier. We continue to build on our diversity education, indigenous anti-racism and gender and sexual diversity training education. Plans are in place to build the curriculum and to have ongoing consultations with all of our advisory boards and the ARAC members to provide this training and education on different and unique platforms. This will include ongoing mandatory training for all CPS members and the availability of educational resources. We also meet regularly, as I believe all of you know, with the City of Calgary Anti-Racism organizational leads. And our work is in step with them, and they too are currently beginning their work with respect to their training curriculum. We also continue with our monthly ARAC speaker series. This last month, we had a presentation on why culture matters. The presentation provided a working platform for our members to explore their personal knowledge, skills, and attitudes in acquiring and applying the cultural thinking framework while asking the question of why culture matters and how do we incorporate being culturally responsive into our everyday workflow. Just a bit of an update on the Afghan refugee resettlement plans. We have partnered with Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada, the Calgary Centre for Newcomers, and the Calgary Catholic Immigration Society to support 20,000 refugees who will arrive in Canada via Calgary. Many of our CPS units are working with many partners, and we're providing information to many of those folks in relation to their rights in Canada, Canadian law, the role of police, and how to report crimes. Sadly, some of you will have heard that we had the report of graffiti at the Sikh temple last night. It can tell you that we have immediately taken ownership of the file. Our hate and extremism team is working with our Diversity Resource Team and our frontline investigators to investigate this complaint, and we work closely with our partners in that community. And I think that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Actually, I think we're going to save the questions to the end. Thank you. Lots of amazing work being done there on a proactive basis. I'll just shift it over to, actually, I think we're going to, because we're inclusive, we're going to start with Deputy Cook, because he hasn't spoken yet. He's going to talk about the major crime side and then shift to Deputy Toffick. We'll talk crime update from the Bureau of Community Pleasing.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. While every homicide is one too many, 2021 is on track to be one of the lowest years on record for this crime. We are currently sitting at 13 homicides for the year, which is an increase of only one since the last CPC meeting in September and is well below the average of 22 by this time last year. At the end of October 2020, we had responded to our 28th homicide of the year. Our clearance rate this year is currently at 62%, with eight files cleared, one more than last month. Of the five files not cleared, two occurred since mid-August. So investigative efforts to seek out the truth and hold offenders accountable continues. For reference and context, Edmonton just reached 32 homicides for the year. They are on track to reach and surpass last year's 38, which, like us in Calgary, was one of the worst years since 1999. As of today, there have been 80 shootings in Calgary this year, nine of them occurring in October. To date, we are 19% below last year in our shootings. None of the shootings in October are believed to be organized crime-related. This is in line with our homicides. As only two out of the 13 homicides this year were deemed or crime-related, and another one to be drug-related. Known offenders working in groups are currently being targeted for suppression by CPS, and these efforts appear to be having an impact. I can tell you, reducing gun violence within the City of Calgary remains one of our top operational priorities across all four divisions of this service. Over to you, Chad.
Thanks, Paul. I'll kind of just go through a couple of different trends and things that we've been tracking. Year to date, there's been a total of 212 swarming by cell offenses, 95 of which have involved the use of a weapon or threats of violence. Out of those, 65% have occurred in a public place, mainly school or community parking lots. So we're taking efforts to try to address those across all of the districts. The offenders are targeting a variety of electronics, but predominantly Apple products, about 69% of those offenses. Since July of 2021, we've seen an increase in the type of violence that's been associated to these crimes. Through investigative techniques and review of CCTV footage, 60 different offenders have been identified to be involved in these offenses, many of whom are young offenders, 33 of which have been charged with two or more incidents. And from an enforcement perspective, we have three district operations underway across the service, and this remains a citywide priority focusing on certain offenders across the various districts. From a prevention and public safety awareness standpoint, we have, we've done multiple media releases, put out ads for Facebook and Kijiji to prompt safe transactions. We are working on messaging for public and separate school boards to share with their students and with messaging on transit digital boards in LRT and bus stations. Also rebranding the buy-sell safe zones at the districts to include messaging for the people in that regard. As well, from a youth intervention standpoint, we're partnering with our CYISS folks in Yard by sharing the offender information that we have to hopefully divert their activity. Next, I'll move on to a couple of operations that we've had run. Next, I'll move on to a couple of operations that we've had running. One in District Five, we had some confidential intelligence that focused on possession of guns and drugs in a residence in District Five. Close to that, we had a traffic stop that revealed a loaded handgun during that event. That led to a search warrant on a vehicle in a residence locating an additional sawed off rifle ammunition and drugs valued at over $14,000 and a stolen vehicle recovered. Another operation in District Two that was a six month operation, started in March, focusing on the drug activities of two individuals residing in one of the districts. They ended up using a number of different investigative tactics which led to Controlled Drug and Substances Act search warrants on two residences and four vehicles. With assistance from across the organization, including Deputy Cook's Bureau, we were able to execute simultaneous entries on a number of residences and vehicles on October 13th. Over $400,000 in cash, $13,000 in various drugs and $17,000 worth of illegal cigarettes were seized. And two individuals were subsequently arrested in relation to that. From a citywide crime picture, some of the things that we've been tracking, just as far as numbers, year to date, we're seeing residential break in entries are down by 31% or just over 1,000 cases. For September alone, it was down 36%. Commercial BNE is seeing a similar trend, 34% down year to date or 1,185 cases and 37% down in the month of September. Vehicle theft down 24% year to date, that's just over 1,000 cases and 32% down in September. Car prowling seeing a similar trend, 27% down year to date, that's 2,700 plus cases. We're seeing a different trend as it pertains to social disorder. We have seen a 4% increase year to date in social disorder. And in the month of September, that's at 8% increase. So in September alone, that was 640 calls of social disorder. So we continue to focus on the social disorder side of things for sure, looking at, at that. Of note, based on the five year average comparisons, unwanted guests, suspicious persons and disturbances make up 61% of the disorder related calls for service. And we also continue to see increases in mental health concerns through the overall volume, but it represents about 5% of the overall disorder calls that we receive. So I'll leave it there and go on to questions.
I was just going to say, it goes without saying there, based on what you've heard, that members of the service are doing a really great job in all areas and they're having a positive and substantial impact on community safety in the city. You'll see that we're taking a data-driven approach to identify trending issues and then to respond accordingly with respect to those. And I think that's having a positive impact. So kudos to the men and women doing the work. Back to you, Chair.
Thanks very much and very happy to hear that the, the data informed work that we have been encouraging for a number of years is paying off. I, I will start with a question, very good news, particular on all fronts, but particularly on the decrease in homicides and shootings. Are you able to comment on any particular aspects of the guns and gang strategy that you've found to be effective in that? Or, or is it too early to tell what has influenced those outcomes?
I, I would say for sure, Chair, that it's, you know, the, quite honestly, it's almost like daily relentless commitment to targeting the known offenders that we know are causing the most community harm. And really, it's, it's everything from suppression to enforcement to directed patrol to offender management. But it's an ongoing activity within the service, especially across bureaus between the Investigative Bureau and Chad's Bureau and Patrol. There are taskings that happen every day in the city to manage those offenders that we know are potentially creating the most harm to our community.
Are you able to comment on the level of gang activity in the city right now? I know over the last number of years, it has ebbed and flowed. Where would you say it is at the moment?
I would describe it, Chair, as pervasive. I think the groups, there's individuals that come together for, for crime and profit and victimization. And I think that is something that is within our communities every day. Chad has reported on the amount of increase in violence within our community, whether it's pharmacy robberies for narcotics or whether it's cellphone robberies or takeover robberies or online Kijiji robberies with violence. So it's not so much, as we've had the conversation with the Commission before, it's not the traditional organized crime where it's an identifiable group of people. It's individuals that come together to further their, their crime, whether it's motivated by drug or profit. And what happens within that criminal space comes the violence. So it's, it's across the board within our community. And again, it's, we've never tried to alarm Calgarians, but I think our media partners will agree, like the level of violence in our city has increased. And then that's why it takes such a coordinated approach to suppress and reduce the violence. I hope that answered your question.
It does. Thanks very much. Commissioner Zhang, I believe you have your hand up first.
Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, my mic is always a challenge. Anyway, my question is about protests or counter protests issues. I think we discussed in the summer about the resource request for meter events and demonstration area. And my question is other than kind of putting more resources into that unit area for existing officers dealing with protests, counter protests. What kind of specific training in place to make sure, enable like kind of better public perception? Because I read some, apparently some of them maybe may not be hundred percent true, but some negative comments against CPI related to the, some officers during the protest in the weekend.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the question. Certainly, the protests and the ongoing demonstrations that we've been seeing at unprecedented numbers has, you know, pushed our organization around that. We do have public safety unit trained members who are trained on crowd control techniques, interacting with the public when they're demonstrating even in volatile situations. So we do have members have specific training around that. We try and deploy them to those demonstrations. Outside of that, our frontline patrol members, we're looking at providing some frontline training around that, just given the volume. As well as our mountain bike unit teams do get some training around working with crowds and specific protest situations. And I think, you know, some of the, the feedback that we do see when you're involved in these protests is that even depending which way you're standing, if you're facing one group or the other, it can appear as though you're supporting one or not supporting another. So I, I think those are all nuances that we have to pay attention to and make sure that we're trying to be as balanced as, as possible in that. But it's, it's not an exact science by any means.
Thanks for the answers. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Siddiqui. Thank you, Chair. Deputy Chief Gill, I was wondering if you could comment on a rough number of officers that you've seen that are already vaccinated? I know that the deadline is November 1st, but in terms of the information you have, do you have a percentage of how many officers and civilians are vaccinated already?
Thanks, Commissioner. As you can appreciate, the numbers are changing every day because members of, have until the end of the month to complete their vaccination records and upload them. I can tell you as of yesterday, roughly 78% confirmed that they are vaccinated.
Perfect. Thank you. And then a follow-up question. When do you plan on having, I guess, a finalized plan in place for COVID vaccinations? I know that you're running where you're allowing folks to do the self-testing for a bit. But do you anticipate how, at what point you'll have a final policy in place on vaccinations and if folks that don't have their vaccination, what the outcome is going to be?
Commissioner, the policy is, is actually been finalized, is in place. The timelines we've established in concert with the city of Calgary is that we, members have until, and all employees have until the end of this month, October 31st, to upload their vaccination results. In the month of November, we will look at, for those that are not vaccinated to offer rapid testing, but also an educational program. And then that'll be for the month of November. And by December 1st, everybody has to either comply with the vaccination policy or continue on with rapid testing, but they will do so at their own cost as of December 1st.
Okay. My apologies. I missed that last part. Thank you, Deputy Chief Gill.
Thank you. And you answered my question as well, which was going to be the cost of the rapid testing. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'm unsure if this is for Deputy Cook or for Deputy Toffek, but COVID-19 has brought about a new crime and that's violation of public health orders. So do we have statistics that capture the quantity of these crimes, the cost of management of these crimes and our forecasts going forward? Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, for the question. We do track the number of offenses where we've issued tickets. However, I'd say that isn't a good reflection of the overall effort put to it because not in every circumstance are we following through with a summons or a charge in relation to that. It is, it is a challenging thing to track all of the costs associated to COVID and the related public health orders. Even just our own time dealing at the, at the strategic level, weekly comes into play and comes into mind. So, but it is something I think, you know, we're, we look at through our IMT or incident management, a team around doing an after action and, and what did we learn through this whole experience? And then what are the costs associated doing this work? And it does vary depending on what the public health orders are. Chief, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add to that.
I think that's a good, probably a good observation. I think probably every wave of the pandemic, Commissioner Campbell has brought a different sort of challenge. And partly because I think the restrictions have ebbed and flowed and they've been different in different places. We've really tried not to have the police, for the most part, be the, the agency of first resort. And that's actually been really helpful because, you know, going back to some of the work that Deputy Cook referred to that folks are doing and Deputy Toffek, it really could be a lot. So at the end of the day, of course, that's where in Calgary, we're really pushed to have bylaw and our partners in transit and, and also the main agency really, because it's a public health issue is Alberta Health Services. Where we become involved more often is obviously around areas that are more volatile, the protests, which you're well aware of. Obviously, the higher risk ones, I think Deputy Toffek referred to, you know, certain businesses or location or individuals that are, you know, staunchly opposed to the restrictions or won't comply, where there's some assessment of risk and then of course, the police become involved. So I feel like it's, it's, it'll be interesting to see moving forward, whether that continues to be the case. I anticipate it will. We see now sort of, we've crested on the numbers and, and, and as a result of that, demand for enforcement will go down and then we may see it go up again. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to continue to monitor. But as Deputy Toffek said, I don't think summons and charges certainly aren't the, the best way. They wouldn't be a complete reflection of what's happened at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going to our next question. Give me a moment. A little technical difficulty. Commissioner North again.
Thanks, Chair. I just, I feel like I need to comment on, you know, what the Sisters in Spirit march that was mentioned today in this meeting. If, if folks here don't know that, that is actually my family that the CPS walked from Begunia Nation up to Calgary to Olympic Plaza with. If people don't understand what that case is, that stems around the case of my cousin Joey English, who was dismembered here in the city after a drug overdose. And you know, at that point, the, the family was very untrusting of the Calgary Police Service. So, you know, as a family member who was actually at Olympic Plaza that day and I spoke at Olympic Plaza, you know, it was, it was a very emotional day because myself and my family were not exactly united. So we, we sat there in peace, Olympic Plaza with the Calgary Police Service and I watched my relative James Medicine Crane pass the Blackfoot name on to CPS member and seeing the CPS officer there in her traditional skirt. You know, those are little things that we need to, you know, we need to celebrate moving forward, but understanding that, you know, we have to keep on the road of action and that we cannot fall into that area of symbolic, which is where, you know, a lot of the frustration and the animosity comes from towards the Calgary Police Service. But I, I just wanted to mention as a, you know, family member of that, that young lady who was dismembered, that it was a very powerful day for me being in Olympic Plaza with the Calgary Police Service and, and, you know, and standing tall for, you know, for the community and, and being there for the community. So, you know, there were some very powerful media photos that came out that day and, you know, I just want to thank the Calgary Police Service and, you know, Chief Newfeld for being there for the community. And those are, you know, especially what my, my cousin James said, that's the first time he ever hugged a police officer in his life. And those are powerful words. Let's keep on that road of action. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. That was a, that was a extremely emotional day. I agree.
And thank you very much, Commissioner, for such a powerful reminder to us of the importance of all of the work that's being done and the importance of having diverse voices, including yours, participate in our discussions here at Commission. So thank you. And with respect to the report on anti racism and in particular, your Indigenous roadmap, I, I had a question. Deputy, you talked about a fork in the road. It's time to go in one direction or the other. Are you able to elaborate a bit on what the choices are that you're currently deliberating on there?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, for the question. It's specifically in relation to the ask from some community members to have the Indigenous liaison officers in each of our district offices. And so I think for me, you know, it's, it's been 10 months, 11 months that I think I continue to come forward and say, we continue to consult with our elders, we continue to get feedback, feedback from the community, which we still do and which we still will do. But I think the community, some of the community is frustrated as, as are we, I would admit. As to are we going to bring in Indigenous liaison officers? What does that look like? Should it be civilians? Should it be sworn members? Should they be in all of the districts? So those are the conversations that were, that we have been having. And I think it's just time for us to decide, are we going to, you know, work on this and bring this forward? Or are we going to go down another path and look at something else?
Thanks for that explanation. And certainly we understand how challenging a lot of your deliberations are on allocation of resources to different aspects of this work. So I appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
Commissioner Cornet.
Thank you for all of the reports. Just a sort of a high level question. With the effects of COVID, both for members and in the community, the continued number of protests and things that are going on weekends, the comment was made that violence, the level of violence has not gone down, but the efforts to suppress it and manage it are constant. With all of those things, can you comment just generally on the impact of, on staff overall? So things like staffing levels, service levels, wellness of the organization, both members, sworn and civilian. So what's the, the overall impact and, and as we get through, you know, yet another wave? And the fact that things aren't going back to the so-called normal, what, what's it look like in, inside the organization?
COVID's been challenging on everybody and all, in all areas personally and professionally. I think, you know, there's been frontline workers in particular, whether you talk about, we hear about a beleaguered healthcare system, we hear about education. I think, I think that's the case for many public servants, but certainly it is the case for police. And I think our frontline officers are feeling the brunt of this. You know, the number of protests and demonstrations, as Deputy Toffek referred to, have been, you know, almost relentless. And it used to be that we'd see them on, you know, on the weekends and maybe on Sunday. Now it's Saturday and Sunday. Now it's during the week, Saturday and Sunday. Now there are several on Saturday, several on Sunday. And as Commissioner Jean referenced, sometimes you've got a protest and a counter protest to manage as well. I think in, in terms of quantity, you know, we've seen a big increase in terms of the, the, what I would call the environment down there. The environment has changed a lot too, I think, just because of the spotlight that's been on police. So in the past, you know, we would go and attend rallies around. So in the past, you know, we would go and attend rallies around, you know, anti-oil and gas or, or environment or whatever it might be. But the police weren't the subject or weren't as close to the subject matter. So they were down there facilitating, you know, people's voices to be heard. So for the most part, those events, you know, went fairly well and didn't really have as much of an impact. Today, I would say the impact is a lot, a lot more significant. It's been chronic. The other thing I think is that a lot of our Public Safety Unit members are also from the frontline. So what happens is when we move those folks into protest environments, as well as the mountain bike units and our BEATs and the folks that you would expect to be there. What ends up happening is they, you know, they're at the protest for several hours and then they go back to their districts. Well, you can imagine by that time, the call volume is built up, probably much to the frustration of some Calgarians as well. Because the opportunity costs of being down at the protests relative to, you know, the disorder issues downtown. Usually the mountain bike unit and the BEATs would be the folks who would be dealing with some of those challenges. And of course, they're not present to do that. I think our diversity folks, very, very interesting impact on our diversity folks. We know the amazing work that they do as well. So they work during the week and then increasingly they've been called out, sometimes by the community because of the relationships they have because of the protests on the weekend. So some of these folks have put in far more hours than they probably should as well. And I think now we're going on to two years where we've been in this environment and it's been a very challenging environment. If you, if you layer on the issues that you're aware of, where, you know, the city's removing some of the benefits and stuff like that, such that we had anticipated and we've certainly seen higher levels of attrition in both 2020 and 2021. Coupled with the fact that we haven't been able to recruit and, and train as quickly. And when I say train, you know, also we had to get exemptions from the COVID health restrictions in order to continue to train. But we've had, we have had to go forward with classes of 12 as opposed to classes of 24. So, you know, now we're going into an environment where we've got, I received the first resignation the other day from an officer who's adverse to the vaccination policy. So as we move forward to the November 1st deadline, we will see there will be some folks who will decide, you know, that this isn't, that that doesn't work for them in terms of the vaccination policy. And we may see some, some people sever from the organization as well. Now, those are personal decisions and people will make those and I understand that. But those will again add to some of the challenges we have around staffing. So I can tell you, those are active conversations we're having currently. We are going back to the plans we had when it came to COVID. When we talked about if we were hit hard by COVID-19 and we had a big outbreak in an area, what areas would we begin to collapse or what areas would we move back toward frontline policing in order to basically deliver core services? So we're going back to those plans to say, what are our staffing numbers presently? Where are our biggest challenges and how do we mitigate those? Because I can tell you from a wellness perspective, our folks are tired. I think it's been a frustrating time. And the, as you've heard, the demands have been significant. And this has prolonged for a long time and we need to, we need to bring them some help. So that's exactly where we sit right now.
Thank you. Thanks for the question, those responses. I am not seeing any other hands up, which means we are perfectly on time. So once again, thank you all very much for those excellent reports and the Q and A. We can now move forward with the next agenda item, which is the Executive Director's Report. Heather, do you have anything you would like to share with us at this point?
Thank you, Chair. I have no report to share this moment.
Thank you. Moving on then to item seven on our agenda, which is the representative updates. We do have some materials from the various members of Commission who represent us on associations and other organizations. Is there anyone who would like to add to the reports or are there any questions on those reports at the moment? Hearing none, then I will add one on my own, which is the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. And just to note that this is the season four of the Police Youth Foundation to be doing its fundraising efforts. The annual calendar appeals are underway, as they always are at this time, with a very popular canine calendar as well as a couple of other special ones this year. And also coming up in November, the major fundraiser is happening with the Chief's Youth Courage Awards. And so all are invited to participate, both by donating to the silent auction at that event and of course, looking for tickets to attend. I believe that takes us to the public participation session, if you will. Give me a moment to catch up myself on where we are with our agenda. Heather has queued those who have asked to speak. And she'll invite you to unmute yourselves one at a time for doing that. I'd like to add a few notes before we move on to our speakers. We know that over the past year or more, our public participation portion of our meeting has been a bit frustrating and unsatisfactory to participants. And we want you to know that it has been for Commission members as well. The increased public interest, as well as the move to this virtual platform for much longer than we might have expected, has certainly made the session more challenging than it was when we were able to be in person. And we have said before that we are looking at opportunities to do something different there. And in the new year, the Commission plans to engage an expert to help us reimagine that portion of the meeting and public engagement by the Commission on the whole. So look forward to some changes coming hopefully in 2022. But in the meantime, we do want to hear your comments and feedback. And while we can't address them in the moment at this meeting, we do take them away for consideration and hope that you do understand that. That your participation and your comments are valuable and important to the Commission and we thank you for it. So with that, I will remind you of what is still the guidelines for participation. Public participants have three minutes to speak. And we'd ask that you please direct your comments to the Chair, this being a meeting of the Commission. And I know people are always interested in speaking to or asking questions of the CPS. But this isn't really the intent of this session. Once again, we also ask that you try to keep your comments relating to items on today's agenda. And in particular, keep in mind that we can't resolve or discuss any personal situations during a public meeting. And anyone who would like to discuss a personal situation, a complaint against an officer, can contact our Public Complaints Director directly or Professional Standards Section of CPS. And again, if you have questions for CPS, you can contact them directly. And once again, a reminder to our media partners that we will hear from citizens first and then we'll end the public meeting before moving on to the media scrum. So Heather, are we ready now for questions?
Yes, we are, Chair. Thank you. We have one public participant registered to speak today. Margaret McQuiston, I'm just queuing you mute.
Hello, Margaret, welcome back.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So first of all, Chair Croft, in response to your announcement that you will be stepping down from the Commission. I would like to thank you for your service on the Commission and wish you all the best with the additional time that you will now have for your enhanced duties and your other role. So thank you for this opportunity to update the Commission on our work to improve the relationship between Calgary's Indigenous community and the Calgary Police Service. As was mentioned, I'm Margaret McQuiston. I am a member of the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good. And I sit on the Truth and Reconciliation Research Action Team. For those who don't know, which I guess most people would by now, the Calgary Alliance is a nonpartisan and nonprofit alliance of congregants, unions, schools and community groups representing more than 37,000 Calgarians. So today I would like to update the Commission on the meeting we had with the CPS on October the 21st. Overall, this was a very productive meeting and we came away feeling like the CPS was listening to us and wants to partner with us to address our issues of mutual interest. At the meeting, we had the opportunity to continue to press for the CPS to hire more Indigenous liaison officers. As we have conveyed to the Commission in the past, we know that the hiring of Indigenous liaison officers will go a long way to improve the relationship between the police service and Calgary's Indigenous community. And this in turn will help reduce the over-representation of Indigenous people in the judicial system. We will continue to push in this direction as this issue is critical to us. From this recent meeting, there were a couple of significant takeaways for us. We learned that any Indigenous liaison officers that are hired will in fact be Indigenous people. This was a concern that we raised with the Commission at your September meeting. So we are pleased to hear this, as only an Indigenous person has the lived experience to connect effectively with the Indigenous community. We were also encouraged to hear that the CPS intends to hire a trauma-informed care specialist to inform the anti-racist training within the service. At the Calgary Alliance, we believe that Indigenous reconciliation and trauma-informed care go hand in hand. And this is the approach that we take at the Alliance. We see that this is an area where we can partner with the CPS by sharing our best practices and expertise. Finally, we had a fruitful conversation on the potential options for enhancing the Indigenous liaison officer role. And we look forward to continuing that discussion so that in the end, the CPS as a successful program that will make a positive difference in how Indigenous people are policed in this city. So as a next step, we have a meeting scheduled with the CPS on November the 16th. At that meeting, we are expecting to hear the results of the forthcoming staffing decisions and to find out which fork in the road which the CPS intends to take. We will continue to push for the hiring of Indigenous liaison officers in each of Calgary's eight police districts. Districts, as this is a critical issue for us at the Calgary Alliance. Finally, in the new year, we look forward to taking up the CPS's offer for us to visit the sacred space and the Treaty VII and MA T flag installation, which was mentioned earlier. So thank you again for your time today.
Thank you once again for joining us and for your comments. As there are no other public participants queued up, then I think we are ready now to take questions from media. So once again, the Commissioners and CPS and the public callers are able to leave the meeting now. And we will come back at five o'clock unless you get a message otherwise, between five and 5:10, I would guess, for our in-camera meeting. And there is a separate link in the calendar invite for that next meeting. So once again, thank you, thank you to all for joining us, for those who are leaving now. And the rest of Commission, look forward to seeing you at the next monthly meeting. Thank you.
Just before we leave, if I can interrupt, because our hands aren't working very well.
Apologies.
Vice Chair Siddiqui and myself want to say a couple of words. So Commissioner Siddiqui, do you want to head off?
Sure. Chair, you were so efficient today. I kept raising my hand and you just didn't.
My apologies.
That's okay. No worries. Sean and I, as vice chairs, would like to thank Chair Croft for serving on the Police Commission for three years and the last two years as Chair. The role of Chair is an important one, requires time commitment, engagement with not only the service, but with Commission members as well. And, but you know, you provided a lot of time dealing with incredibly important items over the last three years and specifically the last two years, while still tackling a very important professional role and trying to maintain a personal life as well. Sean?
There's some other contributions that we just wanted to highlight. Given the Commission's responsibility as a governing entity, Chair Croft had a unique ability to keep governance in mind as we delved into difficult conversations about challenging issues that everybody wanted to find a solution to. She was also a catalyst in the effort to bring the association, the CPA and SOA, to the table as we began our work on anti-racism, equity, diversity and inclusion. One of the outcomes of this was a joint letter to council in June 2020 outlining the commitment of CPS and the Commission to that end. The last couple of years have been very challenging as a result of so many factors, COVID being a significant one, meeting and working remotely together, resourcing issues and expectations from all communities that we serve. Chair Croft gave her time and energy in supporting the Commission and its valuable work, so we just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much for those kind words and for all of the assistance I've gotten from you as vice chairs and all of the other Commissioners. Well, once again, I would say thanks and goodbye to all of us who are leaving us now. And we will rejoin for the in-camera meeting in, say, 20 minutes or so. And the Chief and I will now move on to the media scrum.
We have three members of media who have registered to participate in the scrum today and I will watch for hands from any others. The first one in the queue is Adam Toy. Go ahead, Adam.
Hi, Adam.
Hi, thanks so much for your time and congratulations on the decision. Yeah, I'll just say that, get to some questions and then we'll, we'll continue on. First about your departure, is that going to be affecting or how is that going to be affecting your role with the Police Foundation, if at all?
I am hoping to remain on the board of the Police Foundation. It's something that's been a very special part of the role I have played here as a Commissioner. And it's something that I am speaking with the Foundation about in terms of remaining on there.
Great. A question that I had for, for the Chief and the deputy chiefs that are there. In regards to targeting the known offenders that do the worst in terms of homicides and shootings. Is that just an execution or following the Pareto Principle, the 80/20 rule?
Thanks, Adam, for the question. No, it's a bit more, no, a bit more significant or sophisticated than that. Obviously, we have some pretty good insights through our intelligence as to who's involved in the violence in the community. In some cases, we've got individuals who are actually charged with offenses who've been released. And then oftentimes, those folks will have, you know, a variety of conditions they have to abide by. So if that's the case, you know, our members may, you know, go by people's homes, make sure they're abiding by conditions to make sure that those things are in place. We also know during sort of spikes in conflict between different types of groups, we know who are, what I would say, the most dangerous folks in any of those groups. And so we'll make sure that we're much closer to them if the intelligence suggests that we need to be. And then I think it's, it's not just a matter of trying to be in the right place at the right time or have the interaction to stop a crime now, but it's also offering supports. Our folks do some amazing work with people who are caught up in the gang lifestyle and looking at the reasons why they're caught up, the sort of the root causes, I guess, if you will. And then, and then trying to connect them to supports or offer pathways out of the lifestyle. And I think that's a very significant piece because otherwise, all we're doing is just kind of, you know, I don't want to say babysitting, but all we're doing is just dealing with the problem, but we're not fixing it. So we have had some great successes in that regard and we hope for more of those. But that's really what it looks like. Deputy Cook ran out right while the question, the big question was asked, but now he comes back.
No, thank you, thank you. Last question that I have for, for Chair Croft. I know that you had issued a statement on this last week, but I'm wondering how or whether your departure will be affecting the investigation into and the investigation into how Counselor Chu was, like the discipline history of him and whether or not the work that the Commission had committed to starting, if that is going to be affected by your departure.
Certainly, the work of the Commission on that and everything else will continue with my departure. And I know that the rest of Commission is anxious to move on with that work. The review that we had made a statement about last week that we were going to undertake to look at the process that was followed there to see what, if anything, can be learned from that, that will of course continue. to look at the process that was followed there to see what, if anything, can be learned from that. That will, of course, continue whether I am on commission or not.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next participant in the queue is Dave Gilson. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you for the time. Hello there. First of all, my first question, if I may, Ms. Croft, first of all, if I can get you just to recap again, why you're leaving both obviously your roles as chair and also a member of the commission. And if you could also maybe just at the end of it, explain to folks also a brief synopsis, a brief sense of what happens in the process at this point in terms of a new chair, timeframes on that. And I'm assuming your departure is is soon immediate. When when are you leaving?
It is immediate now. As I indicated, I had advised my fellow commissioners and Mayor Nenshi several weeks ago that this was my decision. And I can start with about the process. As I indicated in the meeting, this time of the year is when council makes decisions on applications to fill open positions for all of the boards and commissions at the city, including the Police Commission. So it's the right time of year for these kinds of changes to be made and that is usually done all around the same time, late October, early November by council each year. So any open positions that there are, which this year will include mine, will be filled by council and those people will then be in place for the November meeting of commission. Commission on an annual basis at the same time, once all of the the members are reconstituted for the following year, commission makes the decisions on how we place people on committees and the choices of chairs for committees and commission chair, which is chosen every year, though typically people do sit in the position for at least a couple of years. So again, that's the right time with the reconstitution of commission for November for me to step away and let others take up the reins.
And if also, if I may, just your decision to go then, this was just in terms of outside responsibilities, what what, you know, how did you come to your decision?
Well, it's exactly that. It's been a very busy time. And when I joined commission, I was quite aware that it's a it's a busy volunteer commitment and I was up for that. And when I was asked to be chair, I knew that it was a significant commitment and I don't take commitments lightly. I know need to know that I am able to do 150% for anything that I do commit to. And it's been a lot of that for the last couple of years with all of the changes that we have seen. The demands of the role have increased and it's important work that we are doing and I have been very committed to it. It's just time now for me to refocus on my other commitments and to pass the reins on to to others.
And if I may, just if you can explain to folks as well, just the internal discipline, discipline process that you've requested in terms of with in regards to councillor Chu, just to explain to people in terms of how that proceeds and kind of what the what the intended goal of that is.
Well, one of the processes that commission has the ability to do is to have the Public Complaints Director, who is a member of the staff of the Police Commission, undertake a review of various things. And in this case, it would be a review of the process that was used in the past discipline processes, not for the purpose of reopening the matter, but for the purpose of looking at the process and as a governance body, we're very concerned that the proper processes are Are you still there, Dave?
Hi there, Ms. Croft.
Welcome back. Apologies once again.
No, that's okay. I appreciate that. Did you, would you just care to just to complete your response? So we kind of got cut off halfway through.
Sir, we were talking about the process that the commission undertakes or will is planning to undertake to do a review. And as I was indicating, the commission has the ability through the Public Complaints Director to review a matter. And in this case, that review is going to look at the process that was undertaken. And as I was explaining, as a governance body, the commission is very keen to ensure that CPS has appropriate processes and continually looks at whether those processes are working and if there's any opportunities to improve them. So the review in this case will be looking at exactly that in looking at this case and how the process had gone, even though it was quite some time ago. The purpose of the review will be to look at whether there is still anything that can be learned. In the meantime, of course, as you're probably aware, there has been a lot of work done on the processes for officer discipline and those kinds of matters. And a lot of improvements have been made, but nonetheless, the review will let us look at whether there are any other matters, any other things that can be learned from this case that might still be able to be acted on going forward to improve matters for future cases of that or other types.
Thank you. I don't want to take over questioning, but I just had a final crime trends question for the chief, if that's possible. And if there's not time, I understand.
Sure. Go ahead. We will let you ask that of the chief.
Chief, you were talking about what we've seen in the way of things like homicide rates over this past year being quite, you know, being down notably and so on. Can you just give some sense in terms of what, you know, may be behind some of this and you know, why we're seeing this? Definitely.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a great question and I wish I had a really firm answer for you. I think it's for sure. We've seen a decrease in our gun violence within the city, which obviously leads to the reduction in some of our homicides. But we've also seen a reduction in our domestic homicides this year as well. But again, I can tell you
Once again, apologies for our participants. I believe we are just in the process of getting the folks back at the room at CPS. And Dave was just teeing up a follow-up question, I believe.
Hi, it's Dave.
Hi.
Hi. Listen, I, if there's somebody else in the queue, I'm happy to to complete my question with the chief after them. I don't want to take away from the time my colleagues.
Well, it's hardly your fault, so we will let you finish your questions. Thank you very much for that, though.
Proceed now.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay, it was for the chief once again, just to, he was in the middle of just explaining in terms of the fact that we're seeing when it comes to some major crimes, we're certainly seeing some decreases this year, just trying to get a sense in terms of why.
Hey, Dave, I'm going to turn it back over. It was Deputy Chief Cook who was answering when we lost you, but I would say that you deserve a medal for patience. Oh, no.
I can hear you.
Paul Cook, again, again, thank you for your patience here. What I was trying to get to with the homicides, although we have averages month to month, really, it's hard to predict that crime. There, there's so many different elements that can come in. When we went offline, for example, in 2020, we had occurrences with multiple victims, which thankfully we haven't seen that this year. But as far as other violent crime, I said to, what we've been saying with the commission all this year, that we have made a very deliberate effort in and around our gun violence. Whether it's frontline patrol efforts to our suppression efforts, whether it's intelligence led to our investigation, making sure we're on the right offenders that are causing the most harm. And that's what we believe is contributing to that 19% reduction. But I can, I can't stress enough that that is almost daily effort across the service, making sure that we're suppressing the crime within the community, violent crime within the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks very much. I am not sure who had been teed up with Heather, but I think that I did see Madeline Smith's hand up on one of our previous incarnations of the call. So Madeline, if you do have a question, please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Hopefully get through this quickly so that
Thanks for your patience.
No, no worries. I guess, Chief, can you maybe speak a little bit about, I know you had had a statement last week about looking for some additional documentation regarding the the Sean Chu incident. Can you just speak about what kinds of documents you were able to find and and what whether any of that will be able to be made public or what what else you have you have taken from from that search?
Yes, thanks, Madeline. Yeah, so it wasn't as easy with respect to this particular matter because, of course, it happened back in 1997. So the records today are much easier to get because we have them on a particular computer system that wasn't in place until probably the early 2000s. So a little bit of a challenge. But the bottom line is we have been able to gather the records and those include things like, you know, transcripts from disciplinary hearings that includes investigative records, that includes decisions of various administrative tribunals, these types of things. It'll all be very useful, I think. We will put those all forward. I'm not so sure what will be able to be released. I mean, whatever is is available to the public can be released. But I'm not 100% clear on that myself. There's a number of these that were closed at the time and or there was publication bans that we've heard about. So at this particular stage of the game, I'm not sure myself what's releasable and what's not. But obviously, whatever's available to the public would be would be releasable.
Okay, and I'm, you know, I'm not sure if if you're able to so much address this situation very specifically, but what what this situation has opened up is a conversation about the ongoing move to reform police disciplinary processes and reporting processes. And I know that you've said that, you know, had this situation arisen today, there would have been a very different way that this already would have been handled versus how it was back in the late 90s and early 2000s. But are there any other sort of systemic issues within the Police Act or otherwise that that this case kind of illustrates the need for for further reform or something in particular you'd like to advocate to change?
Well, I think the big one for this, I think that's touched on here is probably the independence piece, because I think what's come out very clearly is that people are uncomfortable with the notion of police investigating police in cases, you know, serious cases such as this one. And so we get that and we've long advocated for that. In fact, I think the the impetus for the creation of the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team was in fact the Alberta Association of Police Chiefs of Police in the province wanting and advocating for a solution like that. I can tell you what used to happen prior to that is when there were serious cases like this, we would reach out, you know, Calgary would reach out to Edmonton or the RCMP and Edmonton would reach out to Calgary. And so what what would happen is we would have investigators from other police services, you know, going to other cities to conduct investigations, which is time consuming. And of course, as we've talked about here, these investigators have very significant mandates to deal with as well. So I think this is a, this is a very important piece and I think that we'll continue to push this going forward. But yeah, I think that's the primary one that we see here. You know, there's, there's a big question about what's releasable, your question about what should go and be publicly available. It is, it is an interesting question because you've got to balance, you know, the the public interest against sort of, you know, the privacy interests of employees in employee-related issues like this. So at the end of the day, I mean, if there's criminal charges, charges laid, we know it becomes a matter of public interest right away. But in cases where criminal charges aren't laid, then you get into the employment realm and and it's a little bit different. And so anyways, those are all things that I think will be discussed, including, you know, what are the disclosure requirements and the qualifications to to run for public office? I think we've heard lots around that. So I think there it does, it does trigger a number of questions and I'm sure those will be on the top of mind for many as we move forward.
Great. Okay, I have, I have one question of clarification and then just one final and a different topic. Is it still the case that police officers that are disciplined, you know, through through those police processes? As in this case, there was a letter of reprimand on this person's file for, I believe, five years and then it went away. Is that, is that still something that takes place in the current, you know, in the current times?
Yes, it is. So the Police Act contains provisions for expungement of records. So in the case of serious discipline, it would be five years. And in the case of what you would call agreed discipline or more minor issues, the chief can sort of decide anywhere between one and three years. So yes, there is provisions for expungement. And those, though, it's important to know that that's only, the expungement comes into place if there are no other entries on the officer's service record of discipline. And the idea is an officer, if they had a one-off got involved in an incident and it was a one-off and they were disciplined, that they could rehabilitate and they could move past that issue. But if you had during that period of time that the conviction was on your record, if you had a subsequent entry, then that issue would stay on or the previous conviction would stay on. And that would be to promote the issues around progressive discipline.
Okay, thank you so much. And just lastly, on the issue vaccination, you'd mentioned that you have had one person resign because they didn't want to comply with the mandatory vaccination policy. How are you concerned that 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 type of sentiment is particularly widespread within CPS or that you might see quite a few of these types of resignations? Or do you think that it's going to be more so, you know, mostly people getting vaccinated and then perhaps some some holdouts who maybe need more information?
Yeah, I think it's probably the latter, Madeline. I think, I don't think that sentiment is widespread, but I think like the community, I do think we see people who have, you know, hesitation for a number of reasons. And it's interesting to speak to them. Sometimes there are reasons that, you know, you may never have anticipated. So I do think that sentiment is still there. Where that I think is important to us is because I mentioned, we have a number of different and separate issues that are impacting our staffing, but they all compound to create a particular challenge for us. So I'm hopeful that the sentiment doesn't be particularly widespread and that with the passage of a bit of time and a bit of education, that most people will come around. That's my hope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madeline.
Thank you for the questions. I am not seeing any other hands up, but we do have a couple of other members of our media still on the line. So I will throw it out to you to give you one last opportunity for questions before we close off. Tyson Fedora, is that, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Correct. CTV. I just, I guess, a quick question for Chief Newfeld and apologies if this has already been addressed, but we did get kind of cut out with the with the technical difficulties. But in regards to the graffiti incident in the southwest, Sunday night, early Monday morning, we've heard the mayor say that this is disappointing. From your guys' perspective, can you maybe take us through a little bit about the investigation in regards to this and and maybe the disappointment that you guys found when officers did attend?
Well, I think we see the same or feel the very same way about it. I think it is disappointing. We know that our city is far better than that. I think the notion that people would drive to a place of worship like that and have to endure and see those comments painted on the road for going somewhere to worship, I think is extremely damaging. We know that these types of situations where community members feel targeted has a has a profound impact on them. And like I say, I know we're just much better than that in Calgary. And so I would like to, I think, make an appeal for anybody who might know anything about that. I haven't heard about the early going of the investigation or the current the current status of it, but I can tell you this. And as has been mentioned, our hate crimes folks took carriage of the investigation right away. And we will do our level best to determine who is responsible for that and bring those folks to justice. And if anybody out there knows anything about that crime, I would encourage you and and implore you to please give us a call.
If there aren't any follow-ups to that, and I'm not seeing any other hands up with the media, then I will thank you all once again for attending and for your questions and wish you all a good evening.